Getting closer.
I'm getting a computer.
Thanks for hanging with us out there. We had a little difficulties, but we're ready to go. And we'll call this April meeting to order. We'll start with roll call.
Steve Dahl.
Here.
Brendan Farrell.
Here.
Jeremiah Johnson.
Here.
Kathy Klein here. Kelly Kwiatkowski.
Here.
Liam Aves. Derek Nimmer.
Here.
Jim Raymond. Matt Towns.
Here.
Dennis Pauli.
Here.
Okay, thanks. We'll get right into the agenda. We did not have anyone signed up for citizen input. Are there any citizens I'd like to address the board? Going once, going twice. Oh, okay. Next up, we have, congratulations. We have three re-elected board members. Steve Dahl, Kelly Kwiatkowski, Derek Nimmer. We're very glad that they're back here. And we need to do the oath of office. Swear them in. I'm looking at April because...
Aye, Stephen Dahl. Haven't been elected or appointed. To the office of Edgerton School District Board Member. But have not yet all of duty. Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. And will faithfully discharge the duties. Set office to the best of my abilities.
Okay, thank you, April, and thank you, Kelly, Derek, and Steve. It's always nice to have a little bit of stability on the board, especially in a year like this and times like this. So we very much appreciate having you guys back. We will move on. We'll take a look at our meeting minutes from March 8. Any comments, questions, changes there at all? If not, we entertain a motion to approve them.
I move to approve. Is that Kelly?
Okay. Yep, Kathy and Kelly.
All those in favor say aye. Motion carried.
We just haven't done this in so long. All right, great. Okay, treasurer's report. Mr. Dahl.
Just could I just, could you, for the people out in homeland, explain why we aren't taking roll call?
Yes, okay. Folks, we have all nine board members in present in the same room at the same time. So we do not, no longer need to do roll call votes for everything since we're all in person. We're kind of back to normal here and just approving things by voice vote. So, thank you. All right, moving on. Treasurer's report.
Thanks, Matt. So I did go through the scheduled bills. I didn't have any specific questions, Tad, but if you wouldn't mind going through the unplanned expenses that are on the agenda tonight, I appreciate that.
You bet, Steve. Five unplanned expenses and I got a couple more add-ons here. So the first unplanned expense, check number 6769 to Midstate Equipment for $549.65. John Deere snowblower parts. You'll find a little theme here. We got a couple of these invoices as a result of our last snowfall, of course. Check number two highlighted here is 6856 to Mark's Plumbing for $577.78. High school sink sensors. So some of our sinks have sensors on them which require replacement. They go out intermittently. I will tell you, as we upgrade our sink systems, they don't have the sensors included because they just create issue. So that's that one. Third one highlighted is check number 6864 to NIR Roof Care for $970. This is EPEC roof leak. So ironically, it's one of the roofs that we highlighted today. So that happens occasionally. That roof system, knock on wood, has been pretty good this year outside of that one incident. Next check. Check number 6865 to Northland Equipment for $1,190.35. Snowblower repair. Check number 56873 Phil's Electric Drain Service, $540. This is the Yehara Valley Elementary School's septic system. Happy to report that situation was rectified and we're in a, moving in a more positive direction as a result of a recent assessment that we were made aware of today. So we're in a good spot there. Two invoices that I had questions about that I just want to highlight publicly. The first one is check number 6845 for $11,193.35. This is to Hile Music. Dr. Coombs did reference these pianos in the tour today, but Dr. Coombs, if you wouldn't mind just referencing that real quick, that'd be awesome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Sorry about that. So those were two pianos that were purchased for our choir department. A little over half of that money was used from the Zach Zagallo Memorial Fund. Zach was a student of ours that passed away approximately three years ago. And monies received from when he passed were donated graciously to, in particular, the choir department here at the high school. We had a little over $6,000 that we used. Kristen Skifton was in charge of that money. She wanted to purchase a piano. We really needed two because we needed one for also the practice room. So I used some of the building budget money to purchase the second piano.
Thank you, Mark. Good, I'll come there. Okay, last check that I've got to highlight tonight is check number 6820 for $5,204.30. Multiple invoices to the city of Edgerton. This is our quarterly water and sewer invoice. Other questions that board members may have had with the invoices? Awesome, thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions, I'll move for approval of the vouchers pending final audit.
Okay, Steve and Jeremiah, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, great. Thanks, guys. Dr. Pauli, you're on.
Okay, COVID update. I'll be brief. Since we brought all the students back, grades seven through 12, full-time, March 8th was the day we brought kids back who wanted to come full-time. And since then, we've had only one student positive case. And that was not a result of any transmission here at the school. But we've had one and we've had zero staff since we brought kids back full-time, March 8. We are monitoring. There's a little bit of an uptake, uptick in the county with the variant that you're probably hearing about in the news, so we're monitoring that. But at this point, it's not illustrated as any impact on our school district at this time. Jim? Yeah, I'll defer to Craig and Mark. I'm not aware of any impact to our athletes.
It's not cooperating, so I'm gonna hop on here. Can you hear me now? Okay, my apologies, my computer's not cooperating. No, we haven't had zero issues within our, any of our sports for the fall alternative season.
Okay, and that's any other questions with the COVID update. It was pretty brief. The strategic plan update in front of you, I did put a couple of the strategic plans that we have in front of you. And just as a reminder, we do have scorecards that really are the beef of these strategic plans. The strategic plan, if you think, is that's the 30,000 foot of what are the key areas that, as a board, you want to make sure our administration is focused on. The scorecard work that we do, that's when we really, in each area, the scorecard work is where we look at what are going to be our goals to accomplish the strategic plan goal as well as the action plans to do so. This year, frankly, we've been, we haven't really done a whole lot with the scorecards simply because of the transition with COVID. We will be this summer getting back to putting together those scorecards and bringing them forth to the board. So what you'll see probably in August is what are the district at each building? What are the goals and objectives that align with each of the pillars? The reason it's on for tonight is if you look at the date, the year that it sunsets is '21, so it's really the end of this year. And so we're not looking for any action tonight. It's really on as a board discussion if you choose to discuss it. I shared with you in the Board Weekly that we have a couple of options. We can go through a revision updating process and put together a team and go through a process to take a look at it and is there any areas we want to update? We could just add a year or two onto this to kind of get us through for a little while, or we could extend it really, any length that the board chooses. Yep.
Okay, so I just had a question, kind of based on what you were just talking about with the plan to the summer start going back to the scorecards. Does it make a difference to the administration if we, if we get one more scorecard in under the old system? Or is now the, an opportunity to, to switch before we go through the work of doing another scorecard? And so when you do the scorecard, you're doing it based on the new strategic plan? If it doesn't, do you change?
That's a real good question. To be honest with you, Steve, I don't think it really has any bearing because whatever the, the pillars of excellence become, if there's any changes, we just modify scorecard goals to, to address that. So if we decided, for example, to add a sixth pillar, call it whatever, whatever you want, we would just add that pillar to our scorecard work as well. So, good question.
I would recommend that we take a look at it next year. I don't want to kick it down the road too far because then it kind of marginalizes the importance of, of the plan. And having been part of the plan five years ago, it's an excellent process. It's an excellent way to, to look at, at the district and what's important. And, you know, just the process itself is, is what is very important. We have utilized the strategic plan as, as intended. But I think that it's time to take, take a new look because otherwise it just becomes easier to kick it down the road, kick it down the road. But yeah, every five years, but because of COVID, certainly not this year. But I would want it to be on, on the agenda for next spring even, to come up with, you know, winter, spring. So that, that's my recommendation.
I was also on that committee and there was a lot of great community input as well. I would, I agree with Kathy that, you know, I think next year would be a better time. And I do think it's something we should look at, even if we don't change it, just, just to review it, get some fresh, fresh feedback from, from others.
Kelly?
Can you tell me relative, like, did you start, when you started the process last time? Was it in, in the spring and went into, like, how, where did, where was, where's the natural start?
Yeah, the actual, we, we put together, we put together the team in the spring of 2016. I think May 24th-ish was our first meeting. We had about six meetings with a group of, there was 13 of us, the facilitator plus 12. And that 12 included a couple of board members. We had some teaching staff on there and then a couple of parents that also were business owners. So we felt that it was, it was a real nice size group to work with, yet we felt that it had broad enough representation to represent the, the areas of focus that the community would want to see us working on.
I'm, I'm, I'm in alignment with both Steve and Kathy that I do think we should look at it. And I, I also think it's a great opportunity now that, you know, we've got these referendum projects kind of over with to look toward the future. And I think with fresh eyes and a different, you know, look forward. So I, I mean, I'm excited about that as an opportunity for the district.
Okay. I think what I'm hearing is definitely want to revisit it, but not this spring, bring it back next spring, which gives us some time. Okay. Thank you for that. The next item, we've had a few board meetings where, I think as recently as our last board meeting, where we've had parents who requested to have their children internally transfer. And those transfer requests were denied at the building in the central office level. Individuals came forth to the board and there was dialogue about the need to update that policy and, and probably make it, give it more clarity in the direction so administration can enforce it. And so what I would suggest tonight is, because we've heard from some board members, but we haven't heard from all board members. So as a suggestion would be let each board member just share, what is your position on internal transfers? Administration will take the feedback we hear tonight, draft an updated policy based on what we hear and then bring that forth for the board to take a look at in two weeks. If people are comfortable with that. So Matt, I will defer to you if you want to work through each board member to just get feedback for internal.
Yeah, I, I think Dr. Pauli said it well, and I think what we want to, what we hope is that we want to be able to get through with, getting long and emotional and things like that. I just want your opinion, what should a policy look like? What administration be considering when there are requests? What should be the factors, you know, in which cases does it get to the board level? Because I can tell you, you know, six, eight years ago, it never got to the board level. We never dealt with any of these. Now we deal with them very regularly. So, I think probably, I don't want to say quickly because I don't want to cut anyone off, but succinctly or, or, you know, to the point, you know, what do you, what do you think it should look like? And if someone wants to go first, are we going around the, okay, fine. Steve, you're on.
So I'm just gonna summarize the, the points that I made during the last meeting. It's just three main points. The main thing that, that I find is the most important is, once a child starts in the school, they stay in that school. I don't want to see anybody uprooted because of, of our policies. I think that's in the best interest of the student. Second, I think that there needs to be some sort of logistics or, or class sizes or, you know, ceilings or floors, whatever the administration feels best to establish a size that helps them to accomplish, you know, class sizes that are manageable without making them too small. And then lastly, I just wanted to know what things we're doing to use the facility at Yehara. So I think the language I used last meeting was promote, promote attendance. I think there's some opportunity there that, that we could utilize to, I mean, like I said last meeting, had I known I moved into the district, if that school was even an option, you know, that's definitely something I would have been interested in. So those were the three points I made last meeting, and that's really how I feel about this.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Anybody else? And I think, to be clear, I think, again, to be clear, the idea is that this is your chance for the administration to hear us. They're gonna draft something, craft something, and bring it back to us. Kelly wants it.
So I think that managing enrollment across both schools is important. And whatever size classes I think the district sees fit, as Steve had said, ceiling or floor, should be a consideration when you make those decisions. And I do think that whenever it's possible within the limits of that model to accommodate, you know, choice for, for families. I also agree with Steve that once children start in a, in a building, they should stay in a building. I think that several transitions are, can be problematic, especially for young kids. And getting used to their space and place and their people is important. So that's how I feel about it.
And pull out the plug, then you should... I'm old and I have to write things down, are they, so bear with me just a little bit. I am a small school advocate. I think small schools give kids stability and family atmosphere means they're far less likely to fall through the cracks and have their needs overlooked. And I just want to make sure I remind you that there, according to the website, there are 858 students listed as being in community elementary, making it the sixth largest pre-K through fifth grade in the state. And if you take out 100 that are pre-K, still a pretty big school. We've been through boundary issues with Yehara many times in the 25 years that I've spent on the school board. And I want you to know, you're, you're not, we are not unique in this regard. I spoke with a school administrator over in Milton in the past few weeks. They have four elementary schools. Consolidated School has about 100 students and is out in the country. A few years ago, Consolidated had the number one test scores in the state. I had something to crow about. Number one, you can't do better. Consolidated has many of the same issues. And a few years ago, the Milton School Board decided to drop all the school, they dropped them all. They'd go wherever they wanted to go. People could choose wherever they wanted to go. The administrator that I spoke with said it became unworkable. They had four buses going to one subdivision, taking kids to four different elementary schools. You couldn't plan early because you didn't know how many kids you were gonna have coming into each school. And some other things. So they reversed themselves on that, just so you know. And once again, put up school boundaries, not in the same place. And I said, how did that go? And she said, to put it mildly, it was very uncomfortable. I've been through boundary change, and let me just use the word awful. It's awful. You have a lot of angry people. People choose to send their children to school based primarily on convenience. It is number one. They tell you it might be something else, but when you boil it down, it's usually convenience. It's followed by daycare and then athletics, especially if you lived in Janesville with Parker and Craig. Athletics was a big piece of their school choice. The fact that Consolidated School with its number one state rag and struggles with the same issues lets me know that convenience and daycare are tough to fight. Yehara works hard on test scores. They have smaller class sizes. They have a family atmosphere. Community club that raises $15,000 a year, spends it on the students. And in many, some cases, it still doesn't be convenience. In the early 1990s, Yehara was down to about 80s, into the 80s for students, and it was determined to expand the territory of the Yehara District. Now, prior to that, Yehara only included the west half of Indian Ford and it was expanded to include the east half, plus everything south of the 51 Bridge and includes Arrowhead Shores. And at that time, it also brought in Albion. We accommodated people as best we could if they were at community. I think they were, they were allowed to stay, but younger siblings had to go to Yehara. A couple of years later, it was pretty much over. And we have had 10 or 15 years, Matt mentioned, of relative calm because everybody knew that if you want to move to community, the administrators would say no and the school board would back them up. Now Kathy, you've made the argument that taxpayers should have the right to choose where their kids go to school. However, I'm a taxpayer too, and I don't have kids in school anymore. I and many like me represent about 70% of the district. We have no kids in school, but still support the schools. We approved $30 million to rebuild community elementary because it was needed. Heck, it had been done for years. They did not approve building another elementary school. And in so many words, they said, use the facilities you have, just improve. in so many words, they said, use the facilities you have, just improve them. At a recent Rotary Meeting, the city administrator outlined three significant developments that are in some stage of approval in the near future. Very uplifting. We have a six-lane interstate that more readily connects us to Madison. I think we're going to be seeing some growth, and this is not a time we should be looking at ideas that'll cut back on the use of an outline school. The administration's going to come up with some alternative. I appreciate that. I've heard put kindergarten class out at Yehara. I'm in favor of that. I still believe that in order to have a policy that can be administered by the administration, you need to say no to moves from Yehara District. I think anything short of that, and people will appeal to the board, could be wrong. I'll wait to see what the administration recommends, as I feel they are fully understand that they have to be making this decision, and they can't be second-guessed by a board or people who will regularly appeal to the board for a decision.
Okay. Okay. Kind of in response to Jim and to others, and perhaps also because I'm old, I've written some things down as well. Okay, the first thing that I want to talk about is our policy, and that, that addresses internal transfers. The policy was updated in 2019, and by design is vague. The application follows the practice and precedent that was established with the old policy, in which one group of families have one set of rights and options, while denying those same rights and options to another set of families. Families living within the community boundaries have their requests to transfer to Yehara honored without question, thus giving them the right and the option to select which school they want to send their children, while at the same time denying requests from those within the Yehara boundaries, and thus denying them the rights for these same rights and options. Transfer requests are honored or denied based on which side of an arbitrary line a family lives on. The administration is enforcing the policy consistently, but I believe inequitably. The second thing that I want to talk about is open enrollment. Another layer of this matter is open enrollment. Each year, the board approves the recommendation that the district not cap open enrollment numbers from outside the district, including all requests for students to attend Community Elementary. Although open enrollment has been state law for over 20 years, the practice and the acceptance has taken off within the last five to seven years, such that it is now an accepted practice and option. What this means is that families living outside the Edgerton School District can choose to send their children to Community Elementary if they so choose. On the other hand, families living within the Yehara boundaries are denied the same right. The Yehara Boundary families can send their children to any school in the state except Community Elementary. We grant non-resident families options that we deny to families who pay taxes to the Edgerton Schools. When we take an inequitably enforced policy along with our open enrollment practices, we have created a situation that discriminates against a segment of our population based on their address. I believe that as long as we allow transfers from outside of the district to a given school, we can't deny inner-school district transfers. I wanted to also take a look at the reasons that we have requests for transfers. There are two main reasons families come to the board requesting a transfer. One is that the child's academic needs can best be met by attending community school. This may be regarding curriculum alignment or the belief that a child's needs can best be met in a single-grade classroom, an option that isn't available at Yehara. These requests fall under the pillar one of our strategic plan, teaching and learning. Another, and the most common reason that the parent feels that the child's, is that the child's social, emotional needs will be best met by attending community school. Social and emotional needs is pillar two of our strategic plan. I believe that the parent, our guardian, is the best judge as to who, what is best for their child when it comes to their academic or socially-emotional needs. A third reason, which is less, less often stated than the first two that I mentioned, is location and distance from school. In most cases, the families coming to the board live in the outskirts of the Yehara boundaries, whether it's Albion, or Miles Road, or Black Oak Drive, or Arrowhead Shores. These are families who don't have an emotional tie to Yehara, and don't see it as their neighborhood school. In some cases, the families see sending their child to Yehara not as an inconvenience, but a hardship. So besides the cases where the child's social, emotional, I just lost, the social, emotional, and academic needs could be best met by community, family hardship is another reason for requests for transfers that have come to the board. Again, who am I to determine what is a hardship for a family and what is simply an inconvenience? Any policy other than one that allows for open transfers between buildings will either force administration or board to sit in judgment as to what is best for an individual child or family. And now I'd like to talk about Yehara School itself. Every time I walk into Yehara, I am struck by the warm, friendly, welcoming atmosphere. There's both a coziness and an energy that is very unique to the school. Yehara is a wonderful neighborhood school with a caring, dedicated staff. The school district has done an exemplary job maintaining the building and the grounds. Unfortunately, what is missing is the neighborhood. Several years ago, Porter Township, the Porter Township Board approved a zoning ordinance that requires 35 to 40 acres for any new residential build. Over the course of the last 30-plus years, this has severely restricted residential development. And as long as this ordinance is in place, we can expect virtually no future development or growth within two miles of the school. Currently, the closest neighborhood, and I have that in quotes, to Yehara is the Village of Fulton, which is two and a half miles from the school. In order to compensate for the lack of kids in the immediate vicinity of the school, the board has repeatedly expanded the Yehara boundaries until we have, have now reached the point that I believe is beyond reasonable. Albion being the most extreme example. According to Google Maps, the distance from Albion to Community Elementary is three miles, and the distance to Yehara is 9.9. So where do we go from here? How do we put kids in seats at Yehara? Just as I have made the argument that Yehara isn't the best choice for everyone, I would like to argue that Yehara would be an ideal choice for a number of children and families who are, who are currently attending Community Elementary. In other words, there are children and families who would benefit from the small school atmosphere that Yehara provides. I gotta take a drink here. We need to showcase and promote this hidden gem. We need to address the roadblocks that prevent seamless transfer between buildings. This will require some creative out-of-the-box thinking. There are possibilities that, that can and should be explored, some small and easy, some big and more complex. Will it work? Absolutely. I would, will it take work? Yes, absolutely. Will it work? I hope so. I would advocate we establish an ad hoc committee whose sole purpose is to study and develop a plan so that we can capitalize on the uniqueness and strengths that Yehara offers. What I've seen that is that when we expand boundaries and enforce adherence, people want to run. Showcase and promote, I believe that they will come. In conclusion, I believe that we need an open, seamless transfer policy between our two elementary schools.
Okay, so I think most of my points have been touched upon, but I'll just highlight what I think is important in this policy. First and foremost, Matt, you had said eight or nine years ago that these decisions didn't come to the board. And I think that we need a policy that can be administered by administration. These are not board-level decisions. I don't think they should come to the board. I think that this is something that administration should be 100% responsible for. So whatever policy that is, of course, there could be something that has to come to the board, but it should not be the norm. It should not be the typical route that people are taking. I think it's inherently inequitable to do that. Some folks will not come to the board, and therefore, we wouldn't hear their transfer request. So whatever the policy is, it has to be 100% administered by the district administration. There's a few reasons for that. When folks come to the board, we can't fact-check. We can't hear what parents have to say, and then see if their transportation needs are accurate, or whatever the case may be. We had that experience with one of our recent board meetings where Dennis is trying to text Eileen to see if the transportation information is accurate. We never really got a real answer on it. And we're compassionate people. We're almost always going to say yes, at least in my very limited experience of being on for a year and participating for about a half of a year prior to joining the board. I agree with what many folks have said, that the policy has to support managing enrollment at Community Elementary and Yehara. Now, as Steve had said, if he would have known about Yehara, maybe that's where he would have sent his kids. I think I've made it known that our family will be sending our kids out to Yehara, even though we live in town. Therefore, the policy cannot only be a floor, but it has to be a ceiling, and it has to be bidirectional. We can't get to a point where so many people in town want to send their kids to Yehara that those class sizes are so big. I mean, we clearly don't have that issue now, but we should be thoughtful that that could happen, and the policy has to be bidirectional. And if we have the pay to ride, if folks do want to transfer out to Yehara, if they can drop their kids off at the middle school, or if there's a point for folks in town that want their kids to go out to Yehara, if we bring that program back, perhaps we make that a piece of it, so it's easier, and the convenience factor isn't so difficult for folks to have their kids go out to Yehara. Of course, I'm in favor of kindergarten starting out at Yehara. I think it's great. I think it's wonderful. As Steve had said, it's not great for kids to start in one building and then go to another. So if they can do their K through five at Yehara, I think it's wonderful. We do need to have special consideration for any special education needs to ensure that all of their needs are getting met. If kids have to come to Community Elementary to get all of their needs, that would, of course, be a consideration. One other note is for social and emotional needs of children, it's relatively intangible. I think you can make almost anything a social, emotional need of a child, and it's really hard for us to gauge that. So if that's going to be part of the policy for the floor or ceiling considerations of transfer requests, we almost need criteria or guidelines for what meets a social and emotional need. I'm not an expert in child social, emotional needs, other than being a parent, but I feel as though you as educators are convening some sort of a group with your school psychologist could come up with needs where it would warrant transferring to potentially have a waiting system when assessing those floors and ceilings of the transfers to either school. That's all of the points that I have. If you have questions on any of my things, let me know. You can let me know. Don't hesitate to ask.
Okay. Anyone else? I guess that leaves Brandon Jeremiah Dirk, Brandon or Jeremiah?
All right. I'll toss off a couple of ideas that were already mentioned. Jim mentioned the boundaries. I don't like the idea of even considering moving boundaries, changing boundaries, thinking of boundaries changing. Nothing good comes with that for any of us, I don't think. It's just going to create a lot of, a lot of issues across the board. So the boundaries were set a long time ago. I mean, I don't know how many years ago it's been. It's been quite a while. So I think we leave those as they are. That's my, that's my hope. Both Steve and Kelly had mentioned displacement of students if they start somewhere. You know, we owe it to them to be able to finish there. That has to go reciprocal on our, on their end, I guess. We can't, they can't, they can't ask to transfer somewhere, then ask to transfer back. I think we expect a five-year commitment out of those families as well. If we would do it for them, they should do it for us. I would love to see kindergarten at Yehara. I think that's a great option. I hope, I hope that can, that can find a way. I would love to see staff priority. If I have staff who lives in the community district and teaches at Yehara, I would love for there to be a reason or preference to get their own children at that school if they wanted to. I realize that's difficult with floors and ceilings, but I think we owe it to those staff members to let them, their employees, let's let them put their kids where they want to. I think that's what I had.
Is that reciprocal?
I think they showed you. I think that's, I think that's not too much to ask. Absolutely.
I'll just jump in real quick. I'd second basically what Kathy said. There's so much about what meets a criteria for a hardship or whatnot, and only the parents can know the answer to that question. And we've seen that kind of demonstrated the last one we approved, that that was a sliding scale as to what that parent wanted. They ultimately want their kid in town regardless of what the hardship was. So I think we should do, make every effort to promote Yehara as a wonderful school. My, at the time, was denied. I was going to send my kids to Yehara and was denied by the building principal 15 years ago. Never went to the school board, but I think we should just let parents pick where they want their kids to go, and until we run out of space, and then figure out what to do at that point.
I'll chime in. I'm kind of in a unique position, having two children that go to school out there. My wife teaches out there, so I think when it comes to Yehara, I kind of know what's going on out there and what it's like. And I agree with Jim on some points that, and I'm a Yehara convert. I didn't go there when I was an elementary kid in middle school. We picked on Yehara kids, thought they were a bunch of farmers and whatnot. And I ended up marrying one, and it had come full circle, and I'm a huge cheerleader now for Yehara, and think it's a wonderful school. The opportunities out there are unlike the opportunities you can get in community just for, you know, everybody talks, small class size, small school size is the same principle there. It truly is a family out there that benefits so many kids that might not get that same attention they would have gotten in town. That being said, I think, I mean, if we could truly open the borders, and let's say, transportation and convenience were not considered, we would for sure have a waiting list to get into Yehara if, once parents were educated about what it offers. That being said, I think strictly opening the borders wide open is going to present some really difficult challenges when it comes particularly to transportation. So the one thing that the kids in town, or the kids in Yehara, you know, if they have a choice, if they want to go to community, it's a little bit easier sometimes for them to get transportation. But, you know, a community kid that wants to go to Yehara right now, you're on your own for getting the kid out there, as far as I understand, unless we develop something where the kids can be dropped off, say a middle school junction point or something like that. So the transportation, the busing to Yehara is already a mess now with the amount of routes they have to run, and just adding trips into town or to multiple neighborhoods would be an issue. So yes, I think it would be great if we could open the boundaries. I don't know if we can overcome that obstacle. It could be difficult. But education about what Yehara has to offer, I think, is also important. I think adding kindergarten would help with that, that people would go to look at that, and they don't find out after their kindergarten year their kids are switching schools. So that would be super important. I'm on board with staff priority. I know when my wife was still teaching in town, had my children entered school age grade, and we needed to have those kids go to community with her out of pure convenience and logistics, I would have wanted an exemption for faculty. Teachers don't get a lot of pay. These are one of those little things we could help them out with. Some of the recent approvals we've had for transfers have been faculty members, and I know that's been a portion of my reasoning for approving them. So I think that would be a consideration. So I think administration will have to come up with a plan, and it's not going to be easy. The floors and ceilings are something that need to be considered to keep the enrollment at Yehara, to maintain that school as a viable option. You know, there may be other matrix involved, like faculty, and as far as however we develop, what will make an exception for allowing transfers is not what will make an exception for allowing transfers is not going to be easy, I don't think. But I do support having a policy in place that is not open to a lot of interpretation, I guess. It shouldn't be coming on emotional decisions to make these decisions. If we have a certain number of students that have to maintain Yehara, we've gone through our matrix and we've allowed so many kids to leave, that's it. Don't come to the board anymore because the policy has been followed and that's where we are. So I think, I don't think we can keep kicking this can down the road and trying to just stall until we come up with a policy. Something needs to be done and get it down in writing now, I think. So that's my two cents.
That's everybody but me. And, and the only things I'll add, literally everything I could have said has already been said, but I think that the most important thing, the two most important things are managing enrollment and utilizing our resources. Look, we've got a building regardless of geography. We've got two buildings. We need them both. We can't get by with getting rid of one of them or something like that. We need to utilize those. We need to be good stewards of what the community has supported and provided. So managing enrollment is the factor, I think, to a certain degree at both, both buildings. And I think there's, and it seems that there's a couple of things that continually, and I think there's a couple of things that really matter. I think kindergarten has kicked around. I think it seems to me like that would help a lot because one thing we notice is that we don't have kids who start school at Yehara request to leave, right? That never happens. Well, maybe it has, but it very rarely happens when you have a kid who's going to Yehara and decides they want to change. And if they start out there in kindergarten, we all know it's great. They, number one, they get an extra year of that great stuff and it eliminates a transition of buildings, right? They get six years in the building instead of starting here and then sending out. So I think kindergarten is, at least exploring kindergarten is a must. I believe that. And, and I think we need to keep figuring out how to eliminate surprises. It just feels like, like you said, when you moved to town, you didn't even know the school existed. And so many times we have people coming here and they don't even know that the school exists. They don't know, well, I just assumed we'd go to town. I mean, we've got to continue to showcase, promote whatever terms you want to use. But because we're in a position where we've got to utilize what we have and we've, we've got, we've got two great buildings filled with great people. We've got to be able to use them both and, and we've got to be able to take this out of people's hands so that if they get an answer from the administration, they don't like it, then they just come here. And, and I think, you know, like, I think it was Brandon who said something about the emotional decisions or Leah said, how compassionate, you know, we get into those situations. We don't want to just take that from us and then dump that on the administration so now that they have to deal with the emotional compassionate decisions too, right? I mean, we need to eliminate those completely and say, this is how it is. And there's a lot of good stuff floating around with that. There's a lot of smart people in the room. There's a lot of things, you know, I think, I think and trust that hopefully we'll get this back to where it can be something where it doesn't have to be a negative. For some reason, in the last few years, it's become a negative almost. And I mean, I'm a Yehara kid and your kids went to Yehara and you did, you did and your kids do and Jim knows all about it and you're going to send your kids there and your kids went there. I mean, look, everybody, everybody likes, nobody wants to close the school. Everybody knows we need it and want it, you know? So we got to stop this negative tone that seems like always about it. It's just, I grow weary of that sometimes because nobody's, nobody's negative here about it, right? So anyway, that's that. I'm rambling now, so.
So related to the busing issue, I think that that's a solvable problem. Can you hear me? I feel like that shouldn't be a hangup to opening things up. I mean, I think it's just about routes and it's about trying to be creative with where kids get picked up and, you know, I mean, I just, I don't, I don't think we should look at that as being a huge issue. I do think that there are ways that we can figure that out and I would encourage administration to start that dialogue, you know, so that you could kind of get a sense probably from what right way, what that might mean. And, you know, you're not going to ever know from year to year, but I think that if you're talking about a handful of kids, it really shouldn't be that big of an issue, I think, to figure out transportation.
I agree with Kelly. I think transportation right now to me is the biggest roadblock and what we have to do is figure out how we're going to solve that. And I, I do believe, now, I'm going to just say, if a child lives out in Busserville and wants to go to Yehara, that child's going to have a heck of a long bus ride because it's a long bus ride from Busserville to town. It's, you know, you know, but I think that we're a small enough district that we can take a look at individual cases. And it might be that community school is the, you know, at 7:45 in the morning, you have to have your child at community school and there's a transport out. And maybe the final destination is community school at 4:30, which, you know, then we have to have somebody in the building. It's not unworkable. And Jim, I don't see our problem with Yehara and community quite as cumbersome as Milton's, that they have these four different schools and whatever. I think that, I think it's more doable. I think the big-
It's more the thing that the child may be at a great school. Can't get better than number one. And still they have the same kind of problems, but you know, I recognize that there's issues and convenience and things like that. It's hard to have a definite policy without having a definite policy, one that says no.
Mine says yes.
One piece that I'd like to add, I know that you're, one of the things you're considering is some floors or some things like that. Just make sure that you-
out of district and then within the district. So we-
District is zero.
Right. We don't bus kids out of district to come to Edgerton unless there's, I know Drew, I don't know if he's in here. I know there's like some special causes.
We can't transport outside the district. We do have families that transport to the nearest in district stop and then they, we do accommodate that, but we can't take our buses out, we can't write them down to any other community to pick kids up.
Okay. All right. So then within the district, if we have kids transfer from Yehara to Community Elementary or vice versa, is it the parent's responsibility to get the child to that school or would we bus them? I mean, I'm sure we can be creative, but it just seems to be, it could start to be a logistical nightmare, especially depending on when you decide what that deadline is for what school your child's going to attend to get the routes established.
Yeah. I think we'll come forth next week, what I'm hearing is in two weeks, with include transportation as a part of if a parent makes a request and it's approved, it's not approved with the caveat, but you transport. What I'm hearing is an include transportation in there. We, we just need to talk to go right way. I mean, it's, it's, it will be complicated if you remember the board workshop we had about a year and a half ago, but it's not undoable. That's an adult thing. It's a logistical issue that we'll address. It may, it may impact our target of 60 minutes on the bus. I'm not sure until we, we can sit down and do it, but we'll make sure that we include that in what we come forth with next time, next two weeks.
What I think happening here is that we'll be starting small and perhaps growing as time goes on, but when it starts small, you take, take a look at each individual situation. You know, if it's a transfer, someone that lives in Albion that's transferring into town, well, that's probably, that's pretty close to a no brainer. If it's somebody that's living in town transferring to Yehara, that's a little more challenging, but we take a look at the individual and say, okay, what's, how, work with the families. Work with the families. I would rather have that as opposed to saying, having hard guidelines, saying, you know, I think there's ways that we can work individually because again, I see it starting small, but I see it growing. I truly see that once we unpack the gem and we show, we show it, people will decide that this is a good opportunity. I mean, Kelly, I think one time you mentioned that you were surprised that you were sending your kids to Yehara, but once they were there, it was great.
I mean- When, what happened was, and I shared this with Dennis, is that because of, because of where I am, it is long, you know, it's a longer drive because I'm in Albion, but we made a conscientious decision to wait and send our kids. We didn't send our kids to kindergarten here. They were already at a Montessori school and we didn't want to do two transitions. And so we strategically made the decision to start Yehara first grade. So, but we did our homework and, and, you know, not everybody knows when they're coming in and it's not always obvious when you're looking at real estate listings either because sometimes they list, you know, though I, I think they list community area, they don't, I don't think those listings always strictly go by the boundaries. So unless you're, you know, really doing your research, sometimes you don't know, but.
Okay.
So we will come forth with a draft of a revised policy in two weeks.
All right. Moving on.
All right. Moving on, we have a school calendar. Alice was once again the administrator who helped facilitate that process. If you have any questions, we can entertain them, but what we noticed on the agenda was it was a B did not get added to the agenda, therefore we're going to be conservative and instead of voting on it tonight, even though the language does say approve or deny the calendar, we don't want any confusion with anyone in the community of the B not being next to the A to also indicate such. So there's nothing that is urgent that we can't wait two weeks to vote on that calendar. But if you do have any questions, we're certainly happy to entertain those. We're good?
We have two weeks to look at it and then we'll-
Yep. Yeah. If you have any questions, just email. I mean, we'll get you an answer to that. All right. Dr. Weiner.
All right. School fees for 21, 22 school year. I foreshadowed this in the Board Weekly, nothing of super significance. The only change that we're looking at is eliminating the periodical fee for the intermediate school at community as well as Yehara. I do want to highlight that lunch prices have yet to be set yet, so we're just really talking about the school fees outside of lunch prices. So on what was inserted in the board packet, we highlighted with, I think green is the color of what we discontinued, just to make it easier for you as the reader.
Okay. I got there.
Hi.
Okay. Dr. Coombs, an overnight request.
Thank you. Asking for approval or denial for the senior class trip. This would be for next year's senior class trip. We're very much looking forward to a senior class trip. Unfortunately, the last two years have been canceled, so and we're extremely sad about that. But then also for an SMV, which is a super mileage vehicle, that's actually coming up here in about a month and that's to Elkhart Lake where they compete in Elkhart Lake, the super mileage vehicle team.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Next we have some letters of resignation with some of our staff members. Some of these are connected to, and Ted, I'll let you just touch base on the way the law reads with non-renewal. And so sometimes it ends up in a resignation.
Yeah. Absolutely. So we've got all the stack of resignations, four of which are one-year contracts. So statutorily with a teacher contract, you have to go through a very specific non-renewal process. That can be intimidating, even though that none of these would have been for performance reasons, it's just the closure of that one-year contract. We meet with, with each employee, myself and the building principal and just help them understand what this process is because it can be somewhat scary. And then we do give them the choice that they can certainly resign if they like to do that. Otherwise, we can just navigate the non-renewal process with emphasis that it's not because of performance reasons, but rather the closure of the one-year contract. So oftentimes what happens through those conversations is staff members do decide to resign, so that's why we see a stack of resignations. Again, these are the one-year teacher positions that we hired this year. So all of these candidates, as new positions surfaced, you know, they can certainly apply. They've had essentially a working interview the entire year, but we've got to close this one-year contract. That's what this is here.
We have several. I'll just read off quickly. We have John Nichols as a high school custodian effective March 29th. We have Alicia Nelson at Community Intermediate School. She's been doing virtual this year. Martha Cruz as Community Elementary Intermediate School. Randy Phillips at Community Elementary School Special Ed. And then Michaela Resch at Community Fifth Grade. Those fall under, I believe, Ted, what you just explained. And then Lindsay Imerman, congratulations. She's not getting, she doesn't fall under that same umbrella. She has accepted another position in a district to our west, which we wish her all the best. I think, no, I touched on Michaela.
Motion to approve all of these.
Correct. Yep.
I would move that we approve them and personally like to thank Lundy for every year here and I don't know.
Second.
Hi.
Okay. Next we have the hiring of Hannah Salzeder as Community Elementary School psychologist.
Can I just ask, maybe, I don't know if this is a Lindsay or Alice question. Is this the primary, for the primary, or maybe it's a Ted question? I don't know. For the primary pupil services or is this, you know, how does this kind of work with Holly Vesting?
Oh, hi. Hi.
I'm going to unmute and you can, they can hear me through you if you want.
So this is Alice and I will say that it was a great pool of candidates. We're very excited. Hannah is actually a school psychologist and she's going to be kind of focusing on the intermediate side and Holly Vesting is going to slide down and have more of a primary focus. She'll still have early childhood, she'll have 4K and she'll have a primary focus. So we're shifting things around a little bit. Next year, we're excited to get Shelley Johnson back as our life skills teacher and then just kind of moving people around a little bit, but it's all good.
So if you recall, we had a resignation of as guidance counselor in the fall, which we didn't replace and this is effectively replacing that people services team member.
So move to regarding the hiring. Second.
Kathy and is that you?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. And lastly, we have some gifts we would like to have approved. $5,000 from Brendan Bill Wilcox to the Edgerton High School to fund the B&amp;B Tri-Star Scholarship. $2,000 from Michael Messner to the Edgerton High School to fund the student scholarships. $4,110, various donations from the Jill- And lastly, we have some gifts we would like to have approved. Five thousand dollars from Brendan Bill Wilcox to the Edgerton High School to fund the B and B Tri-Star Scholarship. Two thousand dollars from Michael Messner to the Edgerton High School to fund the student scholarships. Four thousand one hundred ten dollars, various donations from the Jill Miller family to Community Elementary Intermediate School to be used towards mental health services in support of students, which is very gracious gift. And then, this is a first for me that um, I think this is pretty awesome. Ninety-one linear feet of black walnut wood valued at eight hundred dollars from Todd Babcock to the Edgerton High School Tech Ed Department. Todd's actually our teacher down there. Seven hundred and thirty-six linear feet of rough-cut oak and two hundred and fifty linear feet of walnut valued at three thousand dollars from Todd Babcock to the High School Tech Ed Department. So that's a gracious gift on his behalf too.
Does the material have a specific goal or a destination?
I will defer to Dr. Coombs on-
Can I put my order in?
The use-
Right? Exactly.
He's building a house for me, um, as we speak. No, I'm kidding. I have no clue what that's gonna be used for.
I'll move to approve them. Appreciate them.
Bye.
Okay. All right. That concludes my report.
Okay, folks. We-[1490.54]